Welcome to the League of Women Voters, Clickatatt and Skamania Counties 2020 Virtual Candidate Forums. Norma?
Good evening and welcome. We are recording tonight's forum. I am Norma Benson, a member of the leadership team of the Nonpartisan League of Women Voters of Washington, Clickatatt and Skamania Counties at Large Group. The League of Women Voters of Washington, Clickatatt and Skamania Counties at Large Group, along with the Goldendale Sentinel and the Skamania County, is pleased to introduce the candidates for Clickatatt County Commissioner, District One, Joanna Turner and Jacob Anderson. Ever since the founding of the League 100 years ago, the League of Women Voters has been a nonpartisan political organization. We encourage the informed and active participation of citizens in government. As a League, we do not support or oppose candidates, factions, or political parties. The League's mission statement is "Empowering Voters: Defending Democracy." The vision statement is "We envision a democracy where every person has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate." This forum is an opportunity for these candidates to present their views and positions so that you, the voter, can make a more informed decision when you mark your ballot. The State League is also sponsoring other forums around the state for other statewide offices. You can find up-to-date information on the state website, lvwwa.org. The League also sponsors an online voter's pamphlet with candidate and issue information at vote411.org. Most importantly, in order to vote, you must be registered to vote. You can do that online or at an elections office near you. Our Vote411 site has more information. And now to get to the forum, I introduce our moderator Tammy Kaufman, who will briefly explain the forum procedures. Tammy has been active in both Clickatatt and Skamania Counties since moving to the area in 2008. She is the past president of the Rotary Club of White Salmon Benjen, has served as a volunteer firefighter and EMT, is a charter member of the One Gorge, by-state regional advocacy organization, and currently serves as a Skamania County appointee to the Columbia River Gorge Commission. Thank you, Tammy, for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Norma, and good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. Welcome to both of our candidates this evening, Ms. Joanna Turner and Mr. Jacob Anderson. The candidates have received the ground rules for tonight's forum in advance and have agreed to abide by them. For the audience, here are a few of our guidelines. The candidates did not receive our questions in advance. The first set of questions were written by the sponsoring organizations. We will then ask questions from the public that were submitted before tonight's forum. Candidates have agreed to stay on topic and will have 60 seconds to respond to each question. I will read each question in full to both candidates. Each candidate has been given one challenge card. At the conclusion of a question, after all answers have been given, a candidate may address the moderator by raising his or her hand and verbally stating that he or she would like to use the challenge card to follow up on something that another candidate stated. In this case only, candidates have been instructed to verbally interrupt me before I move on to the next question, as we want to be sure that we don't miss the challenge. The challenging candidates will have 30 seconds to state the challenge, then the challenged candidate will also get 30 seconds to answer the challenge. Each candidate will receive only one challenge card to use during the entire forum. We have a timekeeper visual for all participants. The timekeeper screen will go red when the time is up. If necessary, I will interrupt any candidate to complete their sentence and discontinue their answer once the allotted time has been exceeded. So that we can all focus on the candidates during the forum, the webinar chat function has been disabled. If you have any questions, please email the League of Women Voters at the address on your timekeeper screen, lvwks@lwva.org. As with everything else right now, we are learning how to modify traditional in-person events to virtual ones. The League of Women Voters records and retains a full unedited copy of all candidate forums. If any portion of the League forum is redistributed out of context to make a candidate appear to say something that they did not say, or edited to make a candidate look bad, or in a way that they did not actually look at the original forum, then the League of Women Voters will alert the media, provide the unedited video for comparison, and file the appropriate complaints with any applicable governing authority. All candidates who are on the ballot for Clickatatt County Commissioner, District One position, Joanna Turner and Jacob Anderson, were invited to this forum, and they are both here with us tonight. And we will now have time for introductions. The order of the candidates begins with the order of the candidates on the ballot. Ms. Joanna Turner will go first, and Mr. Jacob Anderson will go second. So now we will hear from our candidates for their three-minute introduction. Ms. Turner, please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are running for office.
Thank you, Tammy. I want to start out with saying thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Sentinel. I know how much work goes into these events and advertising them, so I really appreciate you making this forum possible for us. Hi, everybody. I want to thank you too for taking time out of your busy lives to be here. Local politics is really, really important. This is something that I've become quite passionate about in the last year or so, and it's very exciting to get to meet all of you, to learn about this county and what its challenges and the rewards and what excites people about living here. I haven't grown up in this county. I moved here five years ago. I have three children, and I love living here. This county has become a home to me that I haven't found anywhere else. And so when I was fortunate enough to be able to buy my house in Trout Lake, I came up against some challenges that I needed to address with my county commissioner. So I reached out to him, and it became apparent to me pretty quickly that they didn't really matter like I felt that they should. And so the more I explored this position and what it meant and what it meant to be part of, the more I realized that this is absolutely something that I can do, and this is absolutely something that is better and can be done better for all the people of Clickatatt County. I am an advocate at the local domestic violence sexual assault shelter, and I'm also a small business owner in the valley here. So I've gotten to know people in a lot of different ways. I've gotten to know people who are in trauma and people who aren't, people who are farmers, people who are, you know, the gorge hustle, people who are trying to figure that out, just like most of us out there. There's a lot of things in this county that I would like to see different and better, and I believe I'm the right candidate to do that. With my voice at the table, we will have better discussions, we will have better decisions, and there will be better outcomes for all the residents of Clickatatt County, not just a few. There's so many things that I can bring to the table that my appoint can't. One of those things is the ability to connect with people in a way that, when you are entrenched in the system, that I don't think you can see as well as somebody from the outside can see. So I would like to ask for your vote in a couple weeks when ballots come out, because I think I'm the best candidate for this job. And I want to do everything that I can to make this the best place to live, not only for you, but for your children and for their children. Thank you. I'm glad to be here.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. And now, Mr. Anderson, please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are running for office.
Thank you, the League of Women Voters, for hosting this debate, and thank you to Tammy for moderating. My roots run deep here in Clickatatt County, as I'm a fifth-generation farmer, rancher, and county resident. Except for the time I spent in Idaho and Tallahassee getting my bachelor's in business marketing with a minor in political science, I've spent my entire life here. So I guess you could say I'm entrenched, for sure. I am a proud father of an 11-year-old young son, who is just like us, having to learn to live life online. And thank you for doing such a great job on setting up these Zoom calls that make so much sense. In the past jive years, I've spent working for the county in the Natural Resources and Economic Development Department. While I've been there, I've worked on our threatened endangered species, our timber issues, our water right issues, our land use issues, and our farming issues. I've also been at the forefront of the broadband issues, and since COVID began, I've been working to get all of our Clickatatt County small businesses the relief funds that they need from the federal, state, and local resources so that they can stay in business for the next year. I come from a family who believes deeply in civic service, and it begins at a young age. I started while I was in high school for my local community council, being just a clerk. I've served on numerous boards here in the county, from the Underwood Conservation District to the White Salmon Irrigation District, to the Clickatatt Water Conservancy Board. I've even most recently been on the Clickatatt County Planning Commission. In that time, I've managed large budgets, I've written grants, I've supervised and managed staff, I've negotiated contracts, retirement programs, and have facilitated hundreds of meetings. I've written policy, budget, bylaws, I've proposed legislation, I've worked on long-range plans, and I've even drafted zoning language. I've also worked for my family ranch in Somal. I've designed and built my own house. So I guess you could probably say I'm a jack-of-all-trades. County commissioners are both the legislative and executive branch of local government. My past 15 years of civil service here in this county has prepared me to take on this role. My goals are to ensure the transparency, to build trust with the numerous interest groups that are out there, to work collaboratively and set good public policy, to set sustainable budgets, and to listen to all sides of the issue. We are fortunate and blessed to live here. I feel so sorry for Joanna that she didn't have the best experience with her county commissioner two years ago. That isn't what you would have with me. I promise you that. I look forward to the questions this evening. I'm happy to give you all my phone numbers if you'd like to contact me afterwards. A minute is not much time to answer a question on this floor. I'd also like to thank you, Joanna, for running a clean campaign and for working together with me. We've had signs that have been stolen, signs that have been vandalized. We've had rumors run amok in this county, and I have the utmost respect for her and her campaign. Thank you, and I look forward to this.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We will now move on to our questions for the evening, remembering that each candidate will have 60 seconds to answer each question. As I mentioned before, the first set of questions come from the League members and tonight's sponsors. So our first question for the evening. How do you think your position as county commissioner can help small businesses recover from COVID-19? We'll begin with Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Tammy. I guess most of my questions are probably going to be what I've done and what I plan to do. So what I've done in the past six months is I've designed and built three small grant programs for small businesses. I've done everything from designing the questions to the marketing campaign to designing how we rank and working with the state. And we have given out hundreds of thousands of dollars to help our small businesses. If we were coming out of COVID now, a lot of them would survive. I'm probably in the best position in order to tell you exactly where all these small businesses are financially. I can see their finances. And we have so much that we're going to have to do, and most of it is our community coming together to support our small businesses, because there's not enough money out there currently through grant funds and loan programs in order to save them. We are literally in a crisis with our small businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I appreciate that, and I appreciate your patience. Our time clock did not work properly during that last one. We're going to allow her a chance to come back online with us. Are we able to reset that?
Yeah, we should be fine.
Okay. One second. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on. The same question to Ms. Turner. How do you think your position as county commissioner can help small businesses recover from COVID-19? I will have a second clock going. Oh, here she goes. Go ahead, please.
So first, I want to say, yes, Jake has done a great job in this capacity, working for the county, and that's part of the reason why I think he should stay in this job, is because he is good at it. He's good with connecting with folks like that. However, we need to really be creative about how we support our small businesses, and our small businesses are the lifeblood of this community. So building community that really comes together, and I've seen it happen here over and over again, but concentrating on building community and encouraging small businesses so that not only these families can stay working, but so that their kids want to stay in this county and that there's a future for them in this county is really, really important. So encouraging businesses to start here and what can we do to encourage them to stay here, I think, is the most important thing. I think including community members in how to do that is also very important, and that's part of the commissioner's job, is brainstorming and seeing the overall big picture.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Moving on to our next question. Farm workers have been working in wildfire smoke, and COVID-19 outbreaks have been linked to fruitpacking. In what ways do you think the county can help farm workers during these types of crises? We'll begin with Ms. Turner.
Our farm workers are very, very important to continue the work that our farmers and ranchers do here. We need to be able to provide them access to housing so that they can get a break from it and access to medical care and just know that they're taken care of. And so how do we value even the people who do the jobs that a lot of people don't want to do? It's really important that we value them and not see them as lesser people, because when we do that, they will have better lives and they will want to give back to the community more. So I think supporting them in really tangible ways is absolutely vital.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, farm workers have been working in wildfire smoke, and COVID-19 outbreaks have been linked to fruitpacking. In what ways do you think the county can help farm workers during these types of crises?
So first of all, we have been helping. And we've been facilitating meetings between all of the farms and the orchards and working to make sure that those guys are on the same page. We've been working between the state and our state representatives and the farms so that they are all on the same page. Many of the changes that have happened at the state level to protect our farm workers have come from the discussions that we've had between our producers, as well as our state legislators, taking that up all the way to the governor's office. In terms of wildfire smoke, we were one of the first ones that we released N95 masks from the stockpiles that we have to give those to farm workers. And those masks went like hotcakes. Those masks also went to North Shore Medical Group, as well as to the two hospitals, for not just farm workers, but for the high-risk people out there who really need those masks during that smoke.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Our next question. Specifically, what have you done to prepare yourself to be an effective commissioner? We'll begin with Mr. Anderson.
Okay, trying to prepare myself to a job of this caliber. As I said before, I've managed budgets, I've served on multiple different committees, boards, I've managed groups, and everything you can think of that the job entails, mainly, you know, the county commissioner set policy directives, I've written policy. The county commissioner set legislative directives, I've written legislation. I've been trying to prepare myself for this for a very long time, and I think that's the view, is that we see something and we work towards it. You have to earn it.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And Ms. Turner, specifically, what have you done to prepare yourself to be an effective commissioner?
Thank you. As a member of our local community council, connecting with people is something that is what this job is founded on, I believe. And so since I decided to start this race, every day, connecting with different people in this county and listening to them and talking to them and understanding what they know. And sometimes it's not even all about knowing it all, it's about connecting with the people that do, and that can help you figure out what the right solutions are. Personally, I've been self-employed almost all my adult life. And so sometimes, understanding how things accumulate, it's just beautiful, because my life skills have absolutely given me the experience to do this job and to do it well. Not only my history being self-employed, but my experience sitting on different boards, my experience as a community organizer, these are things that will serve me well in this position.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Moving to our next question. The COVID-19 emergency has greatly affected our healthcare system, and our county commissioners are on the board of health. In what ways can you work at the county level to help your constituents access affordable, quality healthcare when they need it? We'll begin with Ms. Turner.
I think prioritizing things like access to healthcare in and of itself will help facilitate that, making connections better and really putting more energy on, just energy, no matter what form that takes, into increasing our healthcare and our access to healthcare. We need to absolutely work on our increase to mental healthcare. Something coming out of this, we're all affected by this. This pandemic is something that, for better or worse, no matter what you believe, has affected us all. And until we can start building community and having access to things like mental healthcare easily, we're not going to be able to recover from this well. Recovering from this well is my priority in every single thing that I do, and I think that starts with community building.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, the COVID-19 emergency has greatly affected our healthcare system, and our county commissioners are on the board of health. In what ways can you work at the county level to help your constituents access affordable, quality healthcare when they need it?
Thank you, Tammy. You're correct. The county commissioners are on the board of health, and our county commissioners on the board of health have worked through the COVID process. They have supported what has currently been done with regards to moving through the phases. That is much of what they can do with the board of health. We have a health department. The county sets policy direction. The health department institutes that. We have an amazing health department. We have a health director that we just brought on, who's a infectious disease expert. I take what she says, and I believe it. And if she says do this, this is what we do, and then we have to find the money, because that's what the commissioner's job is, is to set the policy and the directive and try to find the money to get done what we can do. Your answer is 100% correct. Mental health is going to be one of the keys moving forward. And it's something that we don't need just here at the local level, it's also at the state level. And a lot of that money is going to have to come from the state. And what we're going to have to do is county commissioners work with the other commissioners around the state to get our state legislature to push for good mental health.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Moving to our next question. We will now begin questions submitted by the public. A great number of questions were submitted this evening, and we will try our best to get through as many as possible before our time ends. Our next question. We are now in wildfire season. If elected, how can you work at the county level to help our committees reduce the threat of wildfire and smoke? We'll begin with Mr. Anderson.
Well, by the time there's smoke, it's already too late. So the first thing that we do is what we just did today with the county commissioners, was we extended the burn ban to October 15th in both of our western districts. This greatly helps where we're at. We also need to support our fire departments and our fire districts, and that can come in a lot of different forms. On top of that, wildfire danger is going to continue to rise in the future as more people move here. And so what we have to do is work with the organizations that are set up to best manage it. And those are organizations like the Underwood Conservation District and the Department of Natural Resources, who have the people on staff to do community wildfire protection plans. We also have an county-wide community wildfire plan that gives our communities the access to the grant funds to do all these projects. These projects are going to become more and more important as time moves forward. We also have to take a good, hard look at our zoning and what happens in our urban wildland interstates. That's what we're going to have to do moving forward into the future. And I'm sorry, I have no idea where I'm at. The timekeeper keeps changing, so I'm just going to be quiet.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I appreciate that. Yes, we did have a little bit of technical difficulty there. So if you are okay, we will move to Ms. Turner for the question, and we will allot 60 seconds. I appreciate that. Thank you. Ms. Turner, we are now in wildfire season. If elected, how can you work at the county level to help our communities reduce the threat of wildfire and smoke?
Thank you. In addition to what Jake said, it's absolutely creating those policies and helping our whole entire county be fire-wise. But I think supporting our local fire districts is one of the absolutely most important things that we can do. And I think that that can take a lot of different shapes. But I think the first thing we have to do is talk to the fire districts and find out how they need to be supported, because I think that's different from each district, you know, from one district to another district. But supporting those volunteers, again, in tangible ways that they might not be supported right now, is absolutely important. These people are community members, and they're volunteers, and they are out there volunteering their time and putting their blood, sweat, and tears into these positions. So they are our first line of defense, and a lot of them, I mean, there are local EMTs too. So supporting those people 100% is where we need to start.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Moving to our next question. By state law, county sheriffs are partisan positions. Would you support changing this to nonpartisan, and why? We'll begin with Ms. Turner.
Absolutely. Not only do I think sheriff positions should be nonpartisan, but I think positions like this should also be nonpartisan. And it's disheartening to me when I want to talk with folks about local politics and how we can build community and make things better for our neighbors, and they just want to talk about, you know, the big-level politics, the stuff that's going on in DC, because for me, it starts here. It's not about what's happening there. It doesn't matter how you vote at the top of the ticket. What matters is where the rubber meets the road, and that's right here, in our home, in our community, with how we treat each other, how we tend to each other, how we care for each other. And so for me, that's where it starts, and it should be more, should be nonpartisan. And I think it would encourage more people to run and more people to actually talk about what's going on locally. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, by state law, county sheriff positions are partisan positions. Would you support changing this to nonpartisan, and why?
I would support changing not only the county sheriff, but all county-elected officials to nonpartisan as well. Much like how city officials are nonpartisan. There's no difference, and there should not be partisan issues. And the reason why is because the only reason that you have a name, an R or a D behind your name, is if you caucus. If you don't caucus, there's no reason to have a partisan position.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We'll move on to our next question. What ideas do we have to reduce the county's carbon footprint? We'll begin with Mr. Anderson.
Clickatatt County is an amazingly beautiful county with abundant natural resources. We are already working to reduce the carbon footprint in Clickatatt County, and we're doing that in huge ways that most people don't understand. The most important thing that we're doing right now is, on state and private property, we're about to install one of the largest solar plants in Washington State. It will be the largest solar plant in Washington State, but one of the largest in the Northwest. This will reduce the carbon footprint, because it will take away from the Kohphiler Power Plant out in Chehalis. That, the carbon footprint, is amazing. We are also talking about other large projects, like Pump Storage Project, which will help load balance the entire electrical system. If you have that load-balancing ability, you don't need natural gas-fired power plants. That's where we're, as a small county, are going to make the biggest difference in terms of carbon emissions.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Turner, what ideas do you have to reduce the county's carbon footprint?
Yeah, well, I think that the solar project is great. It's union jobs, it's giving people fair wages. The pump storage project has some concerns, but I think that there's lots of different ways that we can go about lowering our carbon footprint that are really super simple, like encourage...
Ms. Turner, it seems that we may have lost your audio, so we'll hold there. Try again. Excuse us all for this technical difficulty. We'll make sure that we give her enough time to answer this question. So I'll ask for the Legal Women Voters on our back end if there's any assistance you can provide to get Ms. Turner back on.
Maybe?
Yes, there you go.
I have no idea what happened.
I think we were at about 30 seconds, I believe. If that's fair to both of you, do you both agree to that? Okay, so we'll go ahead and start the clock for 30 seconds if we can and allow Ms. Turner to finish her answer. On what ideas do you have to reduce the county's carbon footprint?
I'm not sure where it left off either. So I wanted to talk about solar panels for houses and how we can incentivize that for local residents. And even things like, there are no, I wanted to buy a car this spring and there's no charging stations around the county. So installing charging stations, things like that, that would encourage people to get electric vehicles, I think are super easy ways. But also, public transportation, which is a super big challenge in a rural county. But I also think that there's creative ways that we can come together around public transportation.
Thank you, and thank you for working through the technical difficulties with us both. Since you've actually both brought up the issue of the pump storage, we'll move on to a next question in regards to that. Do you support moving forward with the Goldendale Energy Pump Storage Project? If yes, why? If no, why not? And we'll begin with Ms. Turner.
At this time, I can't say that I know enough about it to support moving ahead with it. I know that it sounds like an exciting project and a great project, but I also know that there's a lot of concerns about it. Personally, one of my concerns is just the, you know, what that is going to do to the land. And not only that, but I don't think there's been enough research on it. I don't, the site needs to be cleaned up. There's just a whole host of issues. And it's a long ways down the road. So it's not something that's going to happen immediately. But it's also something that we really need to look at well and listen to citizens and listen to what people want. It's not something that we could just go ahead on and think that it's not going to have any ramifications. So it's something that definitely needs a lot of work looking at.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, do you support moving forward with the Goldendale Energy Pump Storage Project? If yes, why? If no, why not?
This project is now far outside our hands at the county commissioner level. This is a project of regional significance. This is going through the federal process, not through county-local processes. This is, this project is going to be a multi-billion dollar project that, yes, I personally support it. It is using up a piece of property that has been, you know, there working on cleaning it up and it will be cleaned up at some point. And in terms of impacts to the environment, for the amount of power that this produces, it has some of the lowest impacts compared to anything else. And I think that we have to support this project. This project is going to be, for our county, on the same basis in terms of size, value, and opportunity for county governmental operations as what the landfill has, which is what has, you know, kept this county in a good financial position for the last two decades. And I think we're going to have to have someone there that can negotiate these skills and negotiate these agreements so that we can get our best possible deal out of this.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Turner, do you have a challenge?
Yeah, yes, I would like to challenge that.
Go ahead.
I don't agree with that at all. I think that there are other ways that we can achieve the same things. I do not think that this project is going to create the type of employment or security that Roosevelt has created. And I think we need to really look seriously at what we've done to sacred land and water in this area. It's going to be cleaned up sometime. I think we need to figure out cleaning it up before we figure out building another big project there.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, you have 30 seconds to respond to the challenge.
So the aluminum plant has been in process of being cleaned up for a long time now. If you go down there, you can see them moving dirt and rock already. They've been working through the brownfield. They know exactly how long it should take to get to where they need to be. People don't invest this kind of money if they don't have a good expectation that they're going to be able to deal with. This is also a closed loop system. So once you originally fill it, you don't, it's not going to be using water continuously. And that's why I say it's one of the best environmentally friendly ways in order to produce power at an industrial scale.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Our next question. How can you work at the county level to make housing affordable in our area? We'll begin with Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Tammy. I just couldn't tell you how many meetings that I've attended over the last 20 years about affordable housing. Affordable housing in every area looks different. Affordable housing in Goldendale looks much different than affordable housing in White Salmon. What we're going to have to do is we're going to have to come up with what is truly affordable housing and that is for people who are working the lower service positions. And what we really need is, we need apartment complexes. The problem is, is that finding land on the west end to build an apartment complex that has access to water, sewer, and all the other utilities and road access is very, very difficult. What we're doing is, we're likely going to be seeing a lot of that built out for affordable housing in the Dalsport area because that is the only available area that has the necessary requirements that we need in order to build a lot of this. In terms of getting, you know, new families involved in lower housing, we're, on the west side, we're sitting in a place that is very highly attractive to everybody who's moving from outside of the area.
Anderson? Thank you, sir. We will move on to our next question. I'm sorry. Ms. Turner, how can you work at the county level to make housing affordable in our area?
Again, this is an opportunity where I think we, as a community, have an opportunity to be very creative and to think outside the box. We don't need to just put up apartment buildings. There's lots of different things that we can do to create workforce housing for people all over the county, not just on the west side, but also in Goldendale, because it is a challenge everywhere in this county. So I think things like community housing are something that the county can absolutely support. I just think there's different things. We don't need to just run with apartment buildings because we do have a lot of space. But also, what are we doing to help families that have lived here keep property here? I see so many properties that are being bought by people from Seattle and Portland, and they're coming in and scooping up these properties. And so I think there's ways that we can address that too as a county commission and help to preserve land ownership for people who have grown up here for the workforce.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Thank you both there. Moving on to our next question. Clickatap County Shoreline Management Program and the county's Critical Areas Ordinance provide protection for certain defined areas such as wetlands, geological hazard areas, shorelines, habitat, and aquifer recharge areas. How can the county best balance private property rights with protection of these sensitive and important environmental areas? We'll begin with Ms. Turner.
I don't think it's that much of a challenge at all. I think when people care about their property, I think that these guidelines are put into place to keep property owners safe and to keep their property safe and to keep their neighbors' property safe. Nobody wants somebody building something upstream from them that is then going to destroy their house downstream. So I really don't think that there's as much of a conflict of interest as some people think when they talk about these issues. But I think it's absolutely important that we protect, especially our waterways, but this land that we love. And I don't know anybody that wants to see, you know, negative things happen to their property, but their house, their home, but also their neighbors and this land that we love. So I really don't think that there's that much of a conflict of interest as some people think.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, Clickatap County Shoreline Management Program and the county's Critical Area Ordinance provide protection for certain defined areas such as wetlands, geological hazard areas, shorelines, habitat, and aquifer recharge areas. How can the county best balance private property rights with protection of these sensitive and important environmental areas?
I would love to talk about specifics, but because both the Shorelines Management Act as well as the Critical Areas Ordinance are going in front of the Planning Commission, I feel that it's best if I only talk at the highest level and say, environmental protections are necessary, private property rights are necessary, and we have to work together through the public process, including everybody and all, everybody's perspectives, to make amendments to what we currently have. And I look forward to participating in that, so I don't want to say more, so I'm not allowed to participate in it.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We appreciate that. Moving on to our next question. Please explain how you plan to create a more diverse, equitable, and inclusive environment that will bring our citizens together rather than drive them apart? We'll begin with Mr. Anderson.
I've spent my entire career in public service trying to bring people together, facilitating meetings with people who have differing opinions and views. I plan to use that as a county commissioner to ensure that every voice is heard, to ensure that everybody has an equal stake and that everybody can be valued and appreciated for what they have to say. We have multiple ideas on how we achieve that. When we set new people to my position, District One, county commissioner roles for either be the Planning Department or Board of Adjustment, I want to have that be an open public process where we take applications. I believe in having all the county commissioner meetings on Zoom now that we've all learned how to do it and have everybody be able to have a say and make it so easy to give a public comment that you don't have to take a day off of work just to go give your two cents. I think that's the best way that we can get people involved and keep them informed and do our best job that we can to make everybody hear.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Turner, please explain how you plan to create a more diverse, equitable, and inclusive environment that will bring our citizens together rather than drive them apart?
There are so many people in this county that feel disenfranchised, disenfranchised from their local government especially, and that's not okay. One of the first things people ask me when I tell them I'm running for county commissioner is, what does a county commissioner do? And to me, that's a problem. If the county commissioners were doing their job, they'd be out there actually connecting with their constituents and listening to their problems, and their constituents would know who to go talk to. So, you know, if people are holding meetings, but people don't know about the meetings or don't know how to access them, again, that's a problem. So as a county commissioner, I would be out in the communities, talking to people. I know Zoom, we can't necessarily get together in large groups, but there are, again, ways that this can be done, ways that we can connect with constituents and listen to them, make meetings available, and just make ourselves more available so that when somebody does figure it out and call you, they know who they're calling. They're not just calling some far-off distant person, but they're calling their commissioner.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Next question. What do you think is the commissioner's role in bridging the digital divide to ensure that county residents have reliable and affordable high-speed internet? We'll begin with Ms. Turner.
I think the county needs to take this on. There are other small rural counties that have taken this issue on and provided access to broadband for people in the county, for people in the most rural reaches of the county. This is something that we have to do, not only to support access to healthcare, but access so that people can work to make this a desirable place for people to live, to come and work, so that kids can do schooling online, so they don't have to drive to school and sit in the parking lot to access their classes in their Google Classroom. So this is something that the county can get behind. This is something that my opponent, you know, in his capacity, should have been working on for a long time. And I think, you know, we have a missed opportunity and an opportunity to do better. This is something that has to be done and has to be addressed right away through a local ISP that we can create.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, what do you think is the commissioner's role in bridging the digital divide to ensure that all county residents have reliable and affordable high-speed internet?
Well, contrary to what Jim said, the county is not allowed to be a provider of broadband according to Washington State legislation. So unless we can change the legislation, we can't do it as the county itself. What we can do is, we can partner with private companies to do a better job. We're currently doing two things. Number one, we're supporting the new Washington State Broadband Office and their assessment of broadband speeds throughout the county and throughout the state so that we can bring high-speed affordable broadband. Because the problem is, is that according to the maps where it have broadband, if you look at what the speeds are coming back on that broadband survey, it's showing that a good portion of our county has broadband. What we have to do is, we have to drill down, which is why we created our own county broadband survey so that we can drill down there and help our individual users find the best available broadband for them. And that's what I've actually been doing, as well as partnering and working on broadband for years. And we've made huge strides in broadband in Clickatap County over the past 10 years.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Moving on to our next question. Do you support replacing the Hood River White Salmon Interstate Bridge? If so, how will you help to make that happen? If not, why not? We'll begin with Mr. Anderson.
The bridge will have to be replaced at some point. Everything has a lifespan. We just got $5 million to start work on that process. This is a very long drawn-out process. The environmental studies itself is going to be millions of dollars. It's going to take time. And what we're going to have to do is do it the right way so that people can still afford to cross the bridge when we actually build it. At our current rates, when you look at how much it could potentially cost across the bridge, I don't know if I'd be able to go to Hood River if it cost me $10 every time to cross the bridge. It's going to take a lot of federal planning. It's going to take a lot of political horsepower. It's going to take a lot of political goodwill. And we're going to have to build friends in the right places and all the places, all the way through government in order to make that work. And yes, it's going to happen sooner or later.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Turner, do you support replacing the Hood River White Salmon Interstate Bridge? If so, how will you help to make that happen? If not, why not?
Absolutely. I agree 100% with Jake. It needs to be replaced and it's going to take relationship building and a lot of money from a lot of places, not just Clickatap County. So it needs to be replaced. People need to be able to get back and forth across the bridge. People need to be able to walk and bike across the bridge and not just have vehicles to ferry them across. So it's a huge project and it needs to be done.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Moving to our next question. In what ways would you work with our tribal population and government? We'll begin with Ms. Turner.
Again, it comes back to building relationships. I'm proud to say that I have been endorsed by the Confederated Brand of the Yakima Nation. And that's something that, that has probably been one of the highlights of my campaign, is the groups that have endorsed me. And working at building relationship and listening to people so that they feel heard and cared about and feel like they actually can influence something that's being said or done. Somebody cares about their opinion and how it affects them. To me, that's the most important thing. That's the commissioner's job. The commissioner's job is to connect with people, to listen to them, to see the big picture, and to plan well for our future.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, in what ways would you work with our tribal population and government? Jake, you might want to check your mute button, please. Mr. Anderson, thank you.
We have years and years and years of trust building to be done between us and the tribe. There have been lots of mistakes had on both ends in terms of building that trust over the years. I spent years trying to build that relationship with the staff in my capacity, both for the county as well as before with the Conservation District, building those relationships with staff on the other side so that when we get to those hard decisions or getting to those discussions, we have that sense of ownership and understanding between us that we trust that our word is our bond and we're going to stand by it. It's going to take a long time. We're still in the middle of a lawsuit with the tribe over Track D. How are you going to build trust when you're currently in lawsuits? It's difficult, but it's going to take generations. And I think we're going to get there. And the best way to start is slowly and working at it with staff and working at it with tribal members and going to powwows and meeting those people. It's the best way to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Moving on to our next question. Please speak specifically to how you would promote and improve communication between Board of Commissioners and its constituents, the unincorporated citizens of the county. Mr. Anderson, we'll start with you.
So first, as I said, is one of the major things that I believe in, and that is making sure that all county commissioner meetings are on Zoom. It's recorded. People can watch it. People can get involved in their community. They can get involved in what their commissioners do, and they can communicate with their commissioners. As I said when I started this, I would give my personal phone number out to anybody. Anybody can call me with their concerns at any given time. That is the best way that you can create those connections. I wish that this was a normal year and we could do parades and we could do farm, you know, kid togethers and we could throw, you know, gatherings. But this, for whoever gets elected, it's going to be much more difficult for the two of us to have those connections because most people who campaign right now in a normal year would have got to know... would have got to know thousands of people that they are outside their normal jurisdiction. And it's going to be tough. But luckily for me, I've got, you know, five generations of connections and I've got my entire life living here, that I know a good portion of the people in the county.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Turner, please speak specifically to how you would promote and improve communication between the Board of Commissioners and its constituents, the unincorporated citizens of the county.
For starters, really boosting up the local community councils. Our local community councils are our ties to a lot of those areas. They are people who are elected in small towns like Trout Lake here, and they know what's going on, and it's the actual people that are doing the work in the communities. So really connecting with them more. I know that we're in crazy times, and I've been able to make a lot of those connections with folks by picking up the phone and calling them and reaching out to them and going to the farmer's market and having conversations even with masks on, but making myself available to people. I have met a lot of those people and listened to a lot of their concerns. And one of the things that they are the most concerned about is disrupting the good old boy club that they don't feel has tended to them or cared for them or their communities or reached out to listen to them or supported the community councils. So really looking towards supporting the community councils and listening to what they want to see happen in their communities is important.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Our next question. If new re, excuse me, if new resources become available in Clicktack County, what one area of county services do you feel most needs those additional resources and why? We'll begin with Ms. Turner.
Oh my goodness, there's so many areas that need additional resources. I don't think it's possible to say just one. We really, we do need to broaden our economic base, but I think, you know, not supporting big projects. We need to make access to healthcare, you know, important to people. Broadband is super important, again, supporting our EMTs and our firefighters. So I don't think there's any one thing, but I think putting money back in the community is control is the most important. So I know we used to have economic development grants. I don't think that should absolutely, you know, be brought back in the way that it was, but having more influence from citizens on where resources go and how they're accessed by the community, I think is important. And I don't want to be the one to say where money is going to go, you know, to which one project.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, if new resources become available in Clicktack County, what one area of county services do you feel most needs those additional resources and why?
My first thought is going to be mental health, and that is right now during COVID. But the reality, and I just want to be realistic in this, is that in our state in Washington, when you look at the budget numbers, we're not looking at new resources. We're looking at how we keep the ship afloat. We're looking at, the state has already been doing furloughs for months. We're going to be entering tough times where we're required to make really tough decisions. And that's what we're going to be doing, not looking at the new resources we're getting. We're looking at how do we do the best job we can? And I look at that as how we can, we be most efficient to provide the services that our constituents require and need, and that are, and that are the farm, primary forms of county government. And that is done through the budgeting process. And if you've ever sat in a budget meeting and how long they take and, and how much it takes to get through the budget program, you realize that nobody has the time to sit there through all of that when they have a regular job. That's what we, that's why we hire and we elect county employees and county commissioners that can do the job for us and that we trust to do our budgets.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. As we end, or near the end of tonight's forum, we will now allow candidates that did not use their challenge card an opportunity to use it and spend an additional 30 seconds on a topic of their choice from tonight's question. Then the second candidate will have an opportunity to spend 30 seconds on that topic before we move to the final question for the evening. Ms. Turner, you did use your challenge earlier in the evening, and so, Mr. Anderson, do you have something that you would like to bring back up from tonight's topics as a challenge?
Two quick things. Number one, I 100% agree with Joanna, that community councils are really important. We don't have community councils over the entire county like we used to. A lot of them fell apart and they, they went on by the wayside. I was the chairman of a community council for almost a decade. I know exactly how important they can be and the changes that they can have within that community. And secondly, I said I'd give everyone my phone number, but I didn't. So my phone number is 509-637-4437. Again, that's 509-637-4437. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Turner, you have 30 seconds to reply to his challenge.
Nicely done. Listening to the people of this county is the most important thing. Being heard directly is tantamount to how we move forward successfully and rebuild after COVID, how we rebuild community. So supporting the community, yep, is absolutely important. And I don't think our current commissioners have done a good job, and I don't think that people who've been entrenched in that system can do that well. We need newness and we need creativity.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Going on to our final question for the evening. Please tell us why you are uniquely suited to fill this job. We'll begin with Ms. Turner.
A lot of the reasons why I've already covered here make me uniquely suited to fit this job. I have the capacity to connect with folks in ways that haven't been done before. I have the capacity to bring people together and build community in ways that we're going to need to move through this well. I have the capacity to listen. As a parent of three teenagers, I know what it takes to have grace not only for themselves, but also for myself, and how to come back with compassion and kindness and work things out together to build a stronger community. These are things that I have learned throughout my life. All the rest of it can be learned. I've learned a lot about water rights. I've learned a lot about local businesses. I've learned a lot about local ecology. All of that can be learned, but the capacity to bring folks together and to do this job well is something that I think is intrinsic, that can't really be learned. So I would ask for your vote, and if you have questions, my website is friendsofjoanna.com.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. And Mr. Anderson, final question of the evening. Please tell us why you are uniquely suited to fill this job.
I not only have the capacity to listen to people, but I've been doing it through all those different things that I've been doing for this county since I turned 18. Everything I have done has been to continue to build my community. I'm a firm believer in volunteerism. I've done everything I can to bring the next generation of leaders who are going to be the next generation of business owners along with me on that path. It is the people who volunteer that build community. It is volunteerism that makes a community, and we are one large community in this county. And we need to continue. We can, we're never done. We can always do better, just as Joanna said. You can always learn more, and I'm a firm believer that I can even learn more in all the things that I do on my daily basis with my position in my current job. And thank you so much, Joanna, for saying I'm doing a good job of my, a good job of my current position. That means a lot to me. I do respect you, and I think you're an absolutely wonderful, thank you for being such a good person to run a campaign with.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our questions for this evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters and our co-sponsor, the Goldendale Sentinel, thank you to both of our candidates, Ms. Joanna Turner and Mr. Jacob Anderson, for your participation tonight, and we appreciate your patience with our technical difficulties. Tonight's coverage will be available on YouTube and on the League of Women Voters Facebook page. Be sure to head to vote411.org if you need any other information, and please remember to mark your ballot and return it in time to be counted in the general election on November 3rd. The postal service recommends that voters mail their ballots at least one week prior to the election. Voters who choose to use Community Ballot Dropbox should drop your ballot off by 8:00 PM on Election Day. Clicktack County has 11 ballot drop boxes. Please go to Clicktack County Auditor's website for the exact location. Again, thank you all for attending this evening. Join us again tomorrow at 3:00 PM for our forum with Clicktack County Commissioner candidates for District Three, Jim Sizemore and Dan Christopher. Thank you all, and good night.